Okay, we're going to continue on. We are going into committee in the hall. We have six items in front of us today. Our very first item is a technology update report. We're going to get our report and update on information technology, active products, active projects, and work plans will be presented by Marty Mahalan, our IT director. And Marty, I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, City Council. I haven't been before you in several months, and I'm excited to be here today presenting these updates. I'd like to kick it off with some kind of key messages and some themes that we're seeing from the IT perspective. We'll go through project updates and work planning, including some of the work planning that is informing our next biennial budget cycle and work plans, and also provide some information for you about BTV and Access Bellingham. So the first theme is that we're seeing an increase in technology use, which might not be a shocker for anyone, but I thought I'd provide some examples that explain that more fully. From where I sit, we now have two new buildings that we are supporting, and that is because we have two new fire stations. When District 8 joined the city, they are now part of our operation in our network. And those two fire stations have vehicles that have computers that we're now supporting. We've doubled our use of iPads in the last biennium. We've doubled our use of Surface Tablets as staff begins to use applications that work on these mobile devices and provide more efficient use in the field. We have 200 more phones. Our police department has adopted smartphones for their police personnel. And we've added 60 phones to the Emergency Operations Center so that we can take and process more calls in the event of emergency. We also have new systems to support things like the street lighting project. You might not think of street lighting and computer systems, but everything's connected these days. The sewer plant updates also led to more technology infrastructure behind it. The new CAD system that Wacom is working on is largely driven by our CAD staff, and they're leading the effort there. But from where I sit, it means more systems to be backed up and provide that network backup service that we provide. Affordable Care Act generated new reporting requirements. So it's not just a simple matter. It's rather significant, the way technology is increasing, from my perspective. We also are really increasing our efforts to focus on security and compliance. You have only to read a newspaper any day to hear some other security-related news. We are increasing our efforts on that. Some of it is behind the scenes, and what that means is that our IT staff are spending more time working on system updates and checklists and less time maybe with staff supporting who may need more support, but it's just the ratio of time that we've spent. In particular, we're focusing our attention on meeting the Criminal Justice Information Systems Act, which is a compliance standard to protect our justice information that's largely used by our police personnel. We need to comply with those requirements. We're working on efficiency and paper savings improvements. We're a very complex organization with hundreds and hundreds of software systems. Unfortunately, some of those systems are still pretty old. We continue to make headway each year, and I'll provide several examples where we're getting rid of some of the paper. And finally, I just want to mention what I view as my priority is to support the personnel of the city and helping them be stable day-to-day in their operations and so that they can support the residents. So a couple of quick project check-ins. This project the council's quite familiar with, it was one of our most significant investments of the last biennium, and it was almost $1 million. We refer to it as the permitting project, but it's much more than permitting. It includes code enforcement, plan review, online services, inspections, project tracking, rental registration, project review, and more. I'm very happy to say that it's moving into a more stable phase. We went live with the first phase last November. We updated the system once this year. We rolled out the rental inspection piece this year. We have over 100 employees that are accessing it. And I asked our project team what they felt the biggest value was, besides getting rid of the 20-year-old previous permitting system that we weren't able to update. And they mentioned the electronic plan review, the ability to take in these electronic plans, have staff simultaneously reviewing those and exchanging those documents with permitting applicants as a key benefit requested from the customers and of benefit to us in terms of efficiency. They also mentioned the iPads, the ability to do, to track the inspection work in the field. The improvements to checklists and reminders as we integrate this with our mapping system and try to do a better job of providing more accurate checking through the permitting system process. I want to give a shout-out in particular to the front counter folks for the planning department. Those folks really had to deal with a vast change in process, and it was not without wrinkles. But I think we're through the biggest challenges and happy to say that from here on out, I hope just to be providing minor updates to you as we continue to move forward with this system. Oh, actually, I wanted to mention one other thing. We did just recently roll in 22,000 project documents that are largely public works projects are now integrated into this system and accessible via this system. Again, getting rid of another old system that we couldn't support anymore. Last time I was here, we were just about ready to roll out our new website, and I think you'd seen pictures of it. Now you've been using it for a while. Wanted to provide some stats and results. One of our goals was to make sure that system would work for mobile computers, smartphones and tablets primarily, and we thought we might see an increase in use. And sure enough, we are. Now, if you combine that 31% of smartphones and 6% tablets, 37% of the 73,000 to 105,000 web sessions every month are taking place via mobile devices. That was 33% last time we checked, so it is moving up, and having it operate more effectively is a help. In terms of the popular content, I want to provide a bit of a shout-out to police. They greatly expanded their content and the frequency that they're providing updates, and the stats are showing that the community who uses our website is accessing that police-based content.
Hey Marty, that list is not by popularity, I hope.
Oh, absolutely. These are all top, top functions.
I'm just checking, that's all.
Not in alphabetical order.
Good, okay. Feel better now.
But if you're on the list, it's very popular.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sure you're on the list.
I'll also mention that we're improving the accessibility of the site. That's something we're working on this year so that those who have visual and motor skill impairments can use devices to get to the information on our website, and that is wrapping up as we speak. I've worked for the city since 2003, and this was the biggest biennium in terms of court technology improvements. And we've made improvements in three different areas that I wanted to highlight for you, and thank you for your support in funding these. The court was our first department to use the electronic management system, and they started using that system in May of '15. For 134 different types of court documents, I didn't even realize the court had that many types of documents that they manage each day. And as of a few weeks ago, they'd scanned 180,000 documents and are accessing all of those electronically. So that's a, it's an efficiency value for them in terms of reference material, but I think the bigger benefit came this year when, in conjunction with the court and the legal staff, they identified which of those documents our prosecutors could access electronically, thus saving the printing costs and effort so our prosecutors can access the court documents electronically. The second major improvement this year was to replace the recording and sound systems that were really failing for the court, and they were unable to get good audio, and they're mandated to have it. And so this was a system that vastly improved the sound quality, which we expected, but it also provided them with a more efficient way to gather the sound records associated with hearings and court proceedings and provide those in response to public records requests. And finally, we added fairly recently a component for our court hearings when we have defendants in the Yakima jail. There's a video conferencing component so that the court can see on a video monitor and communicate with a defendant who is in Yakima at that point in time and interact with the staff who are in our court facility. This is done fairly widely in other jurisdictions but was a first for us, and it's fully recorded using that same system that we referred to in the previous project, and they're getting very good sound quality, and just began that in July. A few quick updates on work plan. Our aquatic invasive species system was all paper-based in that people filled out paper every time they came to put a boat in a lake. And that has been transitioned to smartphone so that we can more quickly find the people who come to the lake more than once. We can look them up and don't have to do that data entry, and there's water body analysis and other features that come along with that. You'll see, I put this in the second bullet to sneak it in here, but it's not good news. Our legislative management system, the system we use to record these meetings and publish our agendas, causes you to need to wait between meetings at times while it queues up. Well, we've been waiting for an upgrade for that for quite some time and had hoped to do it in August of this year, but it's not ready yet. So the vendor is still working on it, and so I anticipate that that will be on our 2017 work plan because my bet would be we will not get to it in 2016. Another long, long-awaited project for me that I don't recall if we've shared with you previously is that we were early adopters of the Microsoft Office product, which is the cloud-based email system, and we were in what they called their enterprise cloud, which private sector companies would use the enterprise cloud, and they later launched the government cloud. And we need to move from the E-cloud, the enterprise cloud, to the G-cloud, and we need to do that in order to meet that security compliance requirement I was talking about earlier. Our work is done. We've signed the contracts. It's not going to cost anything, but we're waiting. So that's another item in the waiting and wish we'd done this a year ago list. Our network infrastructure is a significant part of our budgets each time we speak with you. A largely major lifecycle replacement, all on track this year, all ordered, mostly installed at this point. I've already touched on security updates. I would mention a few systems, just to rattle off a few, that our staff spends so much time updating and working with departments to test. Includes this year the BNO tax system, document management system, the geographic information systems that we use for mapping, our payroll system, the new permitting system got an update this year, our phone system in order to comply with Windows 10, the utility billing system, the Microsoft browsers and other browsers constantly being upgraded, and then the Microsoft environment itself. So those are just a few examples of what we're constantly doing largely behind the scenes. So I'm going to shift gears and talk about what I think will be our major project and the major item before you as we discuss the budget. And the council may recall that you funded in this biennium some consulting dollars to help us take a look at our core financial system. And this is, it's kind of confusing because we have a lot of financial systems, but the system that pays the bills and keeps track of our general ledger is called Kianta. We've been using it since, well, for at least 25 years. I'm not exactly sure what year we started, but it's been a long time. And unfortunately, it hasn't, it hasn't been improved upon in ways that we've been able to utilize, and so we've purchased a number of side ancillary systems and have to interface all of those systems with it. And I believe we talked to you about this in doing a bit of a market analysis and having some consultants help us look at the market. We're going to continue this effort in the 20, with the next biennium and recommend to you a contract for a new financial system. Our progress this year was that we issued the RFP, and that was, the consultants helped us prepare that. We conducted reference checks, and we just spent six out of the last 10 days demoing financial systems in rooms with our finance staff and other business experts with two finalist solutions. The number that we're discussing at this time is $2.5 million, so it is a significant policy discussion and priority. And as we continue our due diligence and work on that contract and identify the scope and the actual dollars, and we can refine it further, we'll be coming back to you with that as we talk about budget. But I wanted to let you know that we just completed the demonstrations with the top two, and I'm convinced that we can meet these goals that we've discussed with you previously, which was consolidate, try to find a mid-market solution, which means we're not buying a top-of-the-line solution that you might need in a city of Seattle, say, and try to improve standardizing our processes and eliminating the paper. So again, we'll be talking to you more about this, but it's been a fairly significant analysis effort thus far this year. So I'm going to shift gears from the tech side of the house and go to the television side of the house. Some of the council members have seen this, but in November 2015 Comcast conducted a study of their cable subscribers, and I wanted to share a few facts with you. 59% of the subscribers are receiving cable television in the HD format, which surprised me, but that is, because that is a premium service that people have to pay extra to see. I'm sharing some statistics about channel viewing. We have rebranded BTV to be BTV instead of BTV-10. Explain why in a bit, but at that point in time, BTV-10 was being watched more frequently on a weekly and occasional basis than TDW or C-SPAN. And we've always had this inclination that the council meetings were the most popular content because we hear about that. I've got some stats here about what the most popular content was in an official survey. And would mention that the Bellingham Voices program, which had just begun at that point, actually got a few percentage points in recognition, which surprised me. And I think the rest of that is fairly self-explanatory. I'll move on and talk about our programming highlights. I believe you all know that BTV spends a great deal of our time covering and airing meetings, and so I won't mention that other, and want to highlight some of the other programs. Bellingham Voices, which I just mentioned, has now completed 14 episodes and on just a broad variety of topics. We had a blanket repatriation ceremony, candidate forums, city club meetings continue, disaster preparedness, library events, Martin Luther King Day, the Ski to Sea Parade, another program I suspect is extremely popular in the community, the waterfront update, just was released recently, a bit of an update on the waterfront with video, and the Historical Society meetings and their content. So again, a kind of a broad spectrum of programming that we're offering. Access Bellingham, which is a pilot that per year, most recent resolution will be extended through the end of this year, and you'll need to take action to determine whether it should extend or not. So I wanted to provide facts to you at this point, and I believe we'll continue following up with the budget discussions. We've seen programming, a variety of community programming submitted, everything from Bellingham food trucks to a panel about women directors in Hollywood. There were two ongoing shows that have had a few episodes each submitted, one called The Hidden Hamster and one called Bellingham Unplugged. The training program, which has been offered pretty much quarterly, has received very positive reviews from the participants. They've trained 100 graduates, and they're lending the camera packages out 40 to 60 times per quarter. So what are we seeing in terms of submittals? It's about one program a week and maybe just slightly less than that. So although we set aside six hours a week, we are not filling those six hours with new programming, and we're getting about one piece a week coming from members of the public. So again, I think we'll continue that discussion as we go through the budget process and get your policy input on that. I'll wrap up with a bit of an update on franchise news and thank the council for appointing April and Jean to sit on a committee. We received a cable television franchise from CenturyLink in May, had a few meetings with them, and we're still working on what I'd say the administrative components of the franchise agreement, which is about a 60-page agreement. It's pretty, a lot of it's fairly dry and kind of technical. The city sent a set of language notes to CenturyLink over a month ago, and it's in their court, and it hasn't come back yet. So we hope to see their next revision and anticipate getting policy input and feedback with that next revision, but I can't quite predict timing until we see it, until we know what it says. And with that, I am done. Thank you very much for your attention today. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Marty. Councilmember Murphy.
So back to the website. I just had a suggestion. As we get more information on the popular content, it would be really neat if we could, you know, put a different order on the buttons or potentially add some links so we can get people to the information that they're looking for faster.
Okay.
So like, for example, if people were really looking for employment, maybe there could be an employment button. I know there's an expense associated with creating the graphics and such, so maybe just a link somewhere on the homepage to employment.
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
No, I think that's a great suggestion, and I would say it did inform some of the footer design, but people do have to scroll down, so that's another strategy we might use is informing people of that footer because some of the most popular links are right there, but I'll take that back and we'll chew on that.
And then I don't think it'll get the city council on the homepage, but we can always hope.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Murphy, then Lill aquist. I mean, sorry, Hamel, then Lill aquist.
Right. Just going back to page six on the court technology, item three. Is this a fee-based program?
Pardon me, you're talking about the court?
The video-based remote hearings, Yakima.
Is there a fee? Is that the question?
Is this program used for, beyond the hearings, for attorney-client meetings?
No. The remote video, to my knowledge, the remote video conferencing component is only used for the remote hearings when we have a defendant in the Yakima County jail. I don't believe we're using this system for court attorney communications. I believe there's a separate system for public defenders to use directly with Yakima County, but I'm not quite sure on the status of that, and I'd have to, I'd have to get back to you on that. Is that what you're, it's public defender? Okay.
Right, so I went down to Yakima several months ago and met with their DOC folks, and they had a Skype-like system that was not ready to be online yet.
Okay.
So the, you know, one of the purposes of that system would be for the person who's incarcerated to contact their family or their attorney, and because they are so remote, I'm just trying to get to where that's, what the status of that is.
Okay, I don't know the status, but that is a separate system. Oh, Peter does.
So Peter Refatta, Legal Department. So those are two different systems. The one for contacting the attorney is in place. There's a, software has been loaded onto our, at least on our public defender side, the ability to communicate in a Skype-like fashion with a defendant in Yakima County. The visitation piece is a separate technology that Yakima County had been hoping to have in place, I believe in late spring, and it's been a couple weeks, a few weeks since I've checked. There were, the last thing that was holding them up was some power infrastructure issues about having all of those in all of the different locations in the jail, and so they were having to do some work on that, but they were assuring us that that was going to be very, very soon. But that, those are two separate systems, the visitation and the consultation with attorneys. And the first, the consultation with the attorney is in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Lill aquist.
Thanks, Mickey. And thank you, Marty, for the update. With regard to the financial systems project, replacing that whole mix of systems, you said estimated $2.5 million. Is that the one-time installation cost as opposed to annual cost? I mean, how does that, how does that look longer term?
Right. We will, we will face an operating cost over time, and even as we look at these two finalist systems, we have quite a bit of work to do before we can speak to the specific operating cost impacts. So at this point in time, I'd have to, I'd have to say, yes, there will be an operating cost. What it is precisely will depend on decisions made in the upcoming months.
And do we have a handle on our current operating cost for the mix that we're running right now? I mean, hopefully, it won't be much of a...
Um, there are trade-offs because we also will have to decide whether the systems we install will be running in our own data centers or cloud-based, and there's an extra charge if we go with cloud-based, and we'll have to do the analysis to see if that's the best decision for the city based on the benefits of that. So even though we're only looking at two vendors, we have four sets of operating costs and also a mix of financial systems. Sorry, but it's, it's going to take a little bit more research before we can give you more information on that.
Councilmember Barker, then Hamel.
On page, or slide seven, you mentioned that there's some legislative mandates that we're trying to catch up to, but we're waiting on vendors. Does that, does that leave us in non-compliance? But since we have all of our homework done, how will that affect us?
Thank you for asking that. I believe we are now in compliance with the CGS standard, and this, hats off to police too, because they tackled a number of elements of this. What this particular standard in terms of the Microsoft environment means is that we can't put certain types of information into email or into SharePoint until we get to that cloud. So police would very much like to use it more fully, but cannot. So yes, we're in compliance today, but we're not taking as much advantage of the environment as we would like to, so we need to get this moved on so that they, they have better access to the way they use information in the cloud. Does that make sense?
Councilmember Hamel.
I'm just trying to get to how we would measure successes in these new efficiencies as relates to our level of service discussions, improvements. Is there a way to quantify that?
I think it's a, that's a great but very difficult question for me because I only see one piece of the puzzle, and I almost have to defer back to the departments to say, oh, when we eliminated paper here, what did that mean? From my perspective, it's about the technical support percentage and the calls that we get, but I think we have to look at that on a program-by-program basis, and I don't have the best answer for that beyond that.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Marty, I have a comment and a question. First of all, thank you because your team does an incredible job in the background of supporting all the functions of the city, and we're very grateful for that. Particularly, the changes in the court system and the permitting this year made tremendous changes for our constituents, and they are very appreciative of that. So please thank your team for the extraordinary job that they do.
Thank you.
And then I did have a question about the legislative integration part around the videos, et cetera. Does, obviously, when we get this, this will fix, we hope, our timing and our breaks in between.
We certainly do.
But does this also include any upgrades on our cameras or the video equipment that we actually have right now? Is that part of the equation?
It will be, but it will be part of a separate effort. Because we haven't even tested the replacement for the system we know is Sire, I don't want to state exactly what benefits you'll see. I do believe the behind this, the one piece that we have seen is the behind-the-flow workflow process, and that, but that's before the public sees it, looks to be much better. We haven't seen the video recording and integration piece, so we can't test that yet. Your second question had to do with our camera and council chambers' infrastructure, and we do have some improvements proposed for the biennial budget that we'll be discussing in our budget presentations. Some updates and refreshes, including this projector and the recording systems we use in this room, but also some net improvements that we'll propose to you.
Great, thank you. Mayor Kelly.
Well, you beat me to it. Excuse me. One of the things that we could do, you asked about, how do you measure? We do have some measurements from systems that have been in place for a little bit based on what the departments are seeing, and I'd be happy to have the department heads bring those forward so that you could hear the early successes. We aren't replacing the software just because we want to, because, it's because it's old, it's because it didn't talk to each other, it's because it was unmain, what do you call it, backed up? So we weren't, you know, and it wasn't guaranteed by the vendors anymore. So there were a lot of reasons why Lotus Notes and others, you know, were obsolete. So Marty's done a masterful job. So Marty's done a masterful job of putting together what you can see as an enormous work plan. It exhausts me when she comes to give me an update. So I hope you understand that technology for the city is a tool we use to get our services developed, or delivered more efficiently, quicker, more consistently, and makes us more open to public review. So with that, you'll be getting some recommendations for, for IT this year that haven't come in the past because of the fact that their workload is increasing. So just thought I'd let you know that.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, any other questions? Thank you so much, Marty.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your presentation. That was for information only. We're going to move on to our second item of the day. It's about sustainable services, and the city has initiated several processes to evaluate strategies that, if successfully implemented, will ensure the sustainable provision of services for the community into the future. And we are going to have an update from staff on the status of the ongoing processes, and I'm going to turn it over to Rick Seppler, our Complanning and Community Development Director.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm before you today to give you an update on ongoing processes, and a timely update, too. As the budget process begins, we need to keep in mind the long-term viability of the services we approve over the biennium and beyond. And towards that end, to acknowledge the key issues the city faces, the city is not alone in this. I'll make the council aware of an article in today's Seattle Times. Dow Constantine announced that King County will have a $22 million reduction in their budget and layoffs in public safety because of changes between revenues and expenses. And we're not immune to that, perhaps better insulated than most, to be fair. We acknowledge that the city provides and funds services that are significant contributors to the quality of life, that we need to make sure that we, at this point, before it becomes critical, identify and implement those strategies that can make sure those services continue into the future, and be proactive rather than reactive. And we acknowledge that there are really three ways you do this. The first is to find sustainable cost reductions. The other is to look for different ways of providing the services and see if we could save some funding there. And last, of course, is look for additional revenues to fund specific needs. It's very likely that the solution will be a combination of those, but there is a solution out there, I'm certain, to provide assurance for the community, but it will take hard work over the coming months. We've talked in the past that the traditional solutions won't work, that we need to look at adaptive and innovative solutions to overcome the challenges we face. Council, recall that both process goals and principles were adopted, and those principles really are the values we bring to this process as a community. And that is to acknowledge that the services provided are important, there are some things we need to protect because we're required to provide them, and some things we need to protect and ensure they're viable in the future because they're so essential to who we perceive ourselves to be here in Bellingham. We can't imagine a future without them. And it's important that the community is aware that we approach this calmly. We acknowledge that there's an issue in the front, but every action we're taking is to make good decisions to get to an end, to provide for continuity. And if we're successful, there'll be no gap, there'll be no chasm, there'll be no cathartic moment, it'll just be continued provision of services. Council might recall this diagram. This is the process schedule. As you can see, we're going from the third to fourth quarter, and a number of processes are in play. Those processes are all looking at a variety of strategies to see if there were traction to meet the adopted goals and, and intent of the process itself. And while that process is in play, coming before you is the budget, and that budget really is to hold the line as best as possible, to allow the processes to play out so they can be fully implemented, and the next biennium achieve that balance we're looking for. What that likely will mean is a status quo department budget that will acknowledge changes due to labor agreements, but largely hold the line on existing staffing. To look at additions to the status quo budgets, these are targeted and direct ones to achieve a discernible end that's viewed as an opportunity that perhaps can provide long-term benefit to the city. As far as capital projects itself, in our draft comprehensive plan, the capital facilities element, does fully fund within the six years required by law, and fully funds in two years, a number of items. Those are ones that we have a proven funding source that's allocated or highly probable. However, there are a number of projects that are worthy but are not fully funded at this point. In the discussions in the coming months, we hope to find a way to ensure that they be funded, but we still do meet the, the requirements of growth management and the state regulations, because we are not required to show more than listing beyond the out years, and we will come to definite ability to provide those. I'd like to just address one issue that comes up often, and I think it's important, especially as we go forward and talk about this process. Level of service is a term of arc, LOS. It deals with those measures. We heard earlier today Chief Cook talk about level of service and how the police department has gone to dealing with a model that deals with a proactive and reactive time spent per officer in the field, and it's based on the number of calls we have. I'm sure you're aware the fire department has a level of service that's established on response time, how quickly on a tone-out, a 911 call, we're able to arrive, and we shoot to achieve that and staff for it. Parks, as we'll hear later today, has a level of service that's being proposed to be modified in new comp plan to deal with accessibility by how far you are from facility, not as the crow flies, but actually walking. So I think that's a good measure. Transportation is the one, the only one that's required by code, by the RSWs and the Growth Management Act, and our transportation has a concurrency-based model that's multimodal. It looks at a variety of ways of accessing a site, and it calculates the effect of different projects and growth on that. So if we step back from that term of arc, I think really what's important for our discussions going forward is service levels, and that's the way the community experiences the services and programs that we provide. They may not see the overall program of how close people may be to a park, but when they go to a park, they look about how well-kept it is, and what kind of programming is there, and what kind of facilities. Or when they go to a library, how long they have to wait for assistance. Or if they come to the permit center, how long does it take for that permit to go through the process and be issued? So in our discussions going forward, LOS will stick to a technical issue largely associated with capital projects and long-term budgeting. And service level is really saying, what does it feel like? What's that experience of the individual? What does it mean to the average person when they deal and interface with the city itself? So our next steps, clearly, the biennial budget review and adoption will be coming forward, and we need to be mindful of our long-term goal. One of your principles is not to sacrifice long-term benefit for short-term interest. So we need to sort of balance those. There are a number of ongoing processes involving the museum, looking to increase its funding ability for many of its activities. We will be spending a great deal of time on level of service and levels of service, that perception. Surplus land shall be coming back to you in a couple of months. We are running the analysis right now on those properties that aren't warranted or needed for any identified public purpose, but might provide some revenue. And there is an issue before the voters in terms of EMS this November. So I'm happy to answer questions regarding this.
Councilmember Lillquist.
Yeah, on that process schedule, the one at the very bottom, levy-lid lift, has a star next to it for the fourth quarter. And so the levy-lid lift is described as a first alternative process. I actually am very interested in the levy-lid lift idea. I think it addresses not just the symptoms, but maybe the cause of, of our long-term financial problem. What is it, so the star is in the fourth quarter, but that doesn't mean action the fourth quarter. I see that there's a darkened square, though, in the first quarter of next year. What will begin happening at that point with regard to the levy-lid lift? Because I think the levy-lid lift is sort of like the, the mother of all, you know, revenue reforms that we could undertake. It's pretty fundamental, and I think it's going to be part of this conversation. It's the biggest thing we could do, it's the most significant change we'd have to bring to the voters. What will happen in the first quarter?
I think at the end of this year, the end of the fourth quarter, we'll probably do an update. We'll look at what traction we've seen with a variety of the measures that are proposed, whether they can close the gap. As council is aware, the EMS levy is on the ballot, and that does provide a significant upside for the city in terms of closing the gap. You look and see how those ongoing processes, how the election and other factors are, look at our revenue more fully, and see what the projections would be. And then you have that discussion, is it right now to proceed that route? Or are, is traction, and can you make up the gap through other means? So it's a discussion yet to come. It started to say, we need to get to it, but we should see how we fare with what we're doing, but not wait too long.
So implicit in that, you seem to be treating levy-lid lift as sort of like the nuclear option, you know? If we can't get there by four or five different things in combination, then we go to levy-lid lift. Is that how it's being kind of perceived with the administration, kind of like the last resort?
Not to me. I think, I think that when we first started talking about this, we were looking at the, a variety of options, like not put all your eggs in one basket. Part of the levy-lid discussion, I believe, with council, needs to include looking at all the different taxing options that we've used, and then decide, decide how we'd like to use a levy-lid lift in addition to, or potentially substituting for some, or however we want to look at it. So I think part of this is putting together a strategy, because we, we've set a goal of four years to, to get to a sustainable budget, and we're going to get closer this year. I mean, for 17, 18, and then we have 18, 19. So that's why I, we're not rushing just to say, let's do a levy-lid lift, because I don't think that we have put together the options for you to look at that could make it potentially simpler or more complicated. And we also don't know what's going to happen with, with EMS, and we're predicting, you know, continuing to predict pretty flat revenues, but we're getting more construction, so that could be something different, too. So the circumstances right now say we need to, to spend some time giving you good options that we've researched.
Councilmember Lillquist.
So one more thing is maybe more a comment. It's not really a level of service discussion, but it does have to do with an overall how we fund the city discussion. I, I pointed this out at our retreat. One part of our, the way we fund the city is with a very regressive tax, our utility tax. It's our most, it's a very regressive tax. It goes right to the basic necessities that people rely upon, and we tax it at a, you know, relatively moderate rate. And so in all of our large, high-level discussions of how we afford to do what we're doing, I think it's important we consider how fair it is we pay for what we're doing, too. I, I would like to be able to revisit the utility tax at some point. It's not quite a level of service discussion, but I think it relates to it, and maybe when we get to the discussion next year, that might be the time. I'd like to revisit that issue.
Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Hamel.
Just to clarify, is the levy-lid lift voter-approved, or is that council-matic?
I think it's voter, voter-approved. The, the, the 1%, that we do, 1/10 of 1% we do is council-matic, but if you go above that, then it's voter-approved, which is why we need to look at everything together if we would like it to pass.
Councilmembers, any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Rick. That was for information only. Our next item is a waterfront district update, potential for district energy. Consistent with the policies adopted in the waterfront subarea plan, the city has been evaluating the possibility of district-scale utilities such as district energy. The city completed a detailed evaluation of district energy as part of Phase 1 of the waterfront district utility master plan. The preferred delivery mode was identified as a public-private partnership framework where a private partner would operate the utility. The city, the Port of Bellingham, have identified a private operator interested in entering into an agreement, however, only with significant investment, investment from the city and port. Staff is seeking direction on whether to, whether or not to continue discussions. Additional details can be found in the attached, is in our packet. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ted Carlson, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Ted Carlson, Public Works. That was a very good summary of why we're in front of you today. We are requesting some action from council at the end of this, but I'll walk through a very brief presentation to bring you up to where we are today. As you may remember, as we talk about district energy, as we went through the waterfront district subarea plan and all the associated documents, there is quite a bit of discussion around the concept of an eco-district or waterfront district-specific utilities. Is there a way to provide utilities to this yet-to-be-developed area within our city in a more efficient way, a more environmentally-friendly way? So we really built on what came out of the subarea plan. One of the items that was identified at that time was the potential for district energy, and district energy is really looking at a more efficient way to serve the development with, with heating and cooling, using either hot water or steam to supplement the natural gas or electricity that's needed also in those developments. So we built on what came out of the subarea plan, and the city went forward with Phase 1 of a waterfront district utility master plan, looking at those district-specific utilities as it related to the waterfront. And the three that we spent the most time looking at were district heat, microhydro, which will be the next agenda item before the council this afternoon, and a non-potable water system. And that really, that third one really came out of development regulations at the waterfront that say you can't use treated potable water for outdoor irrigation. It needs to be rain catchment or some other means of outdoor watering. And so we looked at the possibility of using the industrial pipeline for those last two, both microhydro and non-potable water. But when we look at district heat, that waterfront-specific utility planning effort did identify it as a possible utility that the city should pursue in conjunction with our partners. One of the primary things that came out of that plan was it made the most sense for the city to find a private partner to pursue that venture. District heating is not something that the city has done before, it's not a line of business that we're currently in, we're not expert in that. But there are private businesses out there that run private district heating utilities in other areas or campus settings. So we wanted to go out and see if we could find some interest in the private arena. We wanted to make sure that the developer, whoever ultimately develops support property, was interested in this, interested in this alternative way of doing business. It's something that they need to be supportive of, it's different than business as usual, and we wanted to make sure that the developer was comfortable with that. And then we had some idea at the time that, starting a new utility where you don't have a big customer base to spread your capital cost across, you know, it's really dependent on development and the rate of development, that there would be some requirement for public capital investment from the city and the port. So those were the things that came out of the, the district-specific utility planning process. I apologize for this graphic, it's a bit hard to read, but just wanted to show you really what we're talking about when we talk about district heating. This is right out of that utility master plan I mentioned. You have the granary building here, to get you oriented, the board mill building here, so kind of on both sides of the initial phase of development. And the concept would, would be that you'd have some type of a physical plant that would use natural gas to heat water. You would then develop a piping system that ran along the spine here of Laurel and Granary to serve these bookend developments. And over time, the, the utility becomes more and more efficient as more people connect to it, and you're able to eliminate the need for building-specific heating equipment, boilers and chillers, in exchange for doing it on a district level so that it all becomes a little bit more efficient over time. So what we've done, since we spoke to you last, is we did pursue a private partner. We, we had several discussions with folks that run these types of utilities in Canada, in the Pacific Northwest, working with the port and with our developer. We did identify a company called N-Wave. They're a large company that does have several, does run several of these types of utilities. Probably the, the closest one, or certainly the closest one, is Seattle Steam, a system down in downtown Seattle that uses steam and hot water in a very similar way. So N-Wave is interested in at least looking at this system at the waterfront. So N-Wave is interested in at least looking at this system at the waterfront. We've spent a bit of time with them, and they have provided us a business plan based on what we know at this point. And that business plan is based on, we know the granary building being the first development. At the time, we were starting these discussions with N-Wave, and they were preparing a proposal, there was the concept of the second building being the board mill redevelopment, which at the time was envisioned by at least some as being a hotel convention center, 200,000 square feet, which was a nice second use that provided the mass that made the system make the most sense in the short term. As you know, that discussion went further with the port, and at least at this point, the Port Commission was not in favor of moving forward with a hotel. I think the developer is also looking at that more closely to see if that truly is what they want to do for their second development, or would they rather do a building closer to the granary building? But nevertheless, the proposal we got from N-Wave assumed that the second building was a hotel. Based on those assumptions, they calculated that they would need a $2 million contribution from the port and the city as the initial contribution for capital. That's what was required to make the system work for them, knowing that you had a very limited number of initial hookups, and that those additional hookups would come over some unknown period of time, based on the pace of development. They did identify, using the assumptions that were both in our plans and their plans, that there would be a 20 to 30, a very long-term payback to the city and the port for that initial capital investment, in the form of some type of a lease agreement. The city would likely enter into a franchise agreement with whoever is the utility provider, and there would be some type of franchise fee that would come back to the city. And over that extended period of time, it's possible that the city would recuperate that initial capital investment. Certainly from a business case perspective, not a very good payback, but there's other reasons, obviously, while the city was looking at this. At this point, time is getting very short. As we know, the Harcourt is moving forward with that initial renovation of the granary building, and you certainly don't want to miss any opportunities to connect a building to a system like this, because it's based on getting as many connections as possible for it to really make sense. So the city has been moving forward with design of the system. The design of the system, accommodating the space within the right-of-way, within the granary Laurel street profile, is not a very large cost to the city. And we felt like, given the previous policy direction and the desire to at least pursue this, it made sense to continue with that design. So as we move forward to 90% design, and we're at about 60% now, and we're moving quickly, trying to get the project delivered by next July, we're anticipating some room within the right-of-way for the system. However, we need to make some final decisions in the very, very near future. We've been working with the port, we've been working with Harcourt, working with N-Wave. Everybody is interested, but we're to the point where we need to actually have some commitments. And we certainly don't want to move forward with finalizing the design and putting out a bid package, that's expensive to put that together, without a real commitment from all the parties that this is actually going to happen. So where we're at now is, Harcourt will be in town next month, October, first part of October. And what the city staff would like to do, and we've spoken with the port staff about this as well, and they've actually taken this item to the Port Commission, I believe, last week, we would like to get some direction from council, if the council is still supportive of at least pursuing this option, knowing that there will be a significant capital contribution. The $2 million that I identified, we're operating under the assumption that that would be split between the city and the port, so a million roughly, based on that number, from the city. Would the council be in favor of city staff meeting with the parties involved in October with the idea of putting together a non-binding MOU, memorandum of understanding, that would say, we're going to continue to try to work this out before we go out to bid? And we would try to develop more formal agreements, the franchise agreement, agreements between the port and N-Wave, agreements between the city and N-Wave, actual contracts and things that would be binding. Try to move forward with those prior to the end of the year, when we actually need to put this package out to bid, or get it prepared to put it out to bid right after the first of the year. But we certainly didn't want to move forward with that without coming to council, letting you know where we're at, that there would be this financial contribution that is not in our budget, it's not in the adopted budget, it's not in our project costs for Granary Laurel. We've identified some potential funding sources for it, but again, it's not budgeted at this point. We would, if council agreed, move forward, try to get into this MOU. And obviously, everything would have to come back to council prior to any formal commitment, but in the interim time, we'd be negotiating these things out. That's really where we're at at this point. We don't have all the specifics. We...
When you're done.
We don't have all the specifics worked at this point. We have some frameworks, some templates that we've gotten from other parts of the country where these things have moved forward and have a general idea of what we'd like to pursue, but there would be quite a bit to get done in the coming weeks, at which point, if we were successful, we would come back to the council for some formal approval in the future. So Chad Schollhauser, City Engineer, is here to answer any more specific questions you might have about the project and what we're being asked to fund, and I think the mayor had something to add.
Yeah, I was going to wonder if it was appropriate for you to talk about if, in fact, district heating is not possible because of factors that we will find out as we move forward, what the other options would be for doing some alternatives at the waterfront.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll talk, the next item will be on the microhydro, which has some possibilities. And we are pursuing the non-potable water system. That's something that we're more familiar with. It's, we run water utility, we're familiar with that type of infrastructure. We, the city, will have parks down there that will need some amount of irrigation. We don't do a lot of irrigation. We try to avoid designing parks that require a lot of irrigation, but there will be some need for irrigation. And we believe that there'll be some desire from developers for some irrigation. So we are moving forward with design of that non-potable system. It requires a bit of treatment, just to deal with some of the algae issues that you might have over time build up if you don't have a chlorinated system or a treated system. So we're moving forward with that and intend on building that when we build Granary Laurel along the spine. So of the three district-specific utilities that were identified in that Phase 1 utility plan, two of them outside of the district energy still have some potential with the water, non-potable water being, I think, a very real thing that will be delivered next year.
Thank you, Ted. Well, I can start. It's no secret I've been a proponent for eco-districts for a long time. And I realize this is a tough thing, because we're talking about the long game, and it's hard to weigh dollars for now versus future. But I think this would make our waterfront a very unique and progressive city example. And you only have one chance. Once the utility infrastructure is built, the option goes away. So I realize this is a really important decision for us right now, but I think district energy really supports our climate action plan and what we've put in our comprehensive plan. So even though it's a really tough thing around the dollars and committing to that, I feel like this is something that's really important for our city, to give us, to be a very progressive environmental city. I particularly love what the city of Vancouver did. I've seen many district energy systems, and I'd love for us to be able to be that kind of example, so I'm a proponent for it. Councilmembers Barker, then Bornham, and then Lilliquist.
Of the $1 million, how much do you think we could get from granting sources, and how much would have to come from, would it come from the general fund? I mean, what's the expectation there?
Yeah, at this point, we have not specifically identified any funding sources other than our typical waterfront funding sources, which we need to do a little bit more analysis to see what's actually eligible. But it would be our normal general fund-type capital funding, which would be real estate excise tax. We don't know whether or not it would be eligible to use our lift money that we have for the waterfront. That could be a possibility. We'd look into that. But those would be the two, along with just the general fund itself, primary funding sources we would most likely recommend. In terms of grant funding, it's certainly something we could look at and continue to pursue. We're not, we don't have any, I guess, real possibilities identified at this point, but we will continue always looking for those and to see where it might make some sense.
Councilman Bornham, then Lilliquist.
Yeah. I love the concept. I've always have. But I do have a real problem with the $1 million, especially not knowing where it's coming from and what projects it's going to compete against. The port, I can see why they would get more excited about it, because this is going to benefit the people that they're selling property to and businesses to, and it'll be more attractive for them to do it. Our only main benefit is, we can say we've done a really neat, we're involved in a really neat thing, and over all the long-term, you know, effects. But having a $1 million that we don't know where it's going to come from, and we have parks on the waterfront that we're not quite sure, that we've had to take money from other projects that we're hoping to put in for this, you know, it makes me, it's real concern, a real concern for me to say, yeah, let's do this, and we don't know where the money's going to come from, and it might come from other projects that we are really in favor of that might not be able to go because we're funding that. So for me, there's, not knowing where that funds is coming from, this is a real tough one, right? Not prepared to jump out and say, let's do this with, yeah, without some more answers. Even though I love the concept of the project, but it's not necessarily our project there to benefit, we won't benefit as Harcourt may and as the port may in things financially.
Thank you, Pinky. So I was one of the city council members when we approved the waterfront plan. Three of us were on the council at the time. And one of the, kind of like, the most disappointing parts about that plan is, I don't think it was as visionary or attractive or as smart or as inspiring as many of us hoped it would be, but this element was one of the good elements. This is one of the elements where we shot a little further. I think we need to distinguish this waterfront. There are people in the community who are still out there trying to sell our waterfront. We need to set ourselves apart in the market. And having these kind of innovative utilities is one of the ways we can differentiate ourselves. I like what Pinky said about the long game. I think this has a potential to pay off if we think about it in terms of the long game, rather than in terms of the short game. I do wonder how we'll pay for it. It seems like the cities and the job business of providing utilities, this seems to be maybe a separate utility. Maybe there's a different kind of model that would, you know, involve us setting up a utility, not just laying pipe. But then again, maybe it should be a private utility, you know, that that's how it'd be paid for. This may be, sound new to many people, but actually, there are districts not too far away. There are hundreds of energy districts around the world, and large companies like N-Wave know about that. They know this is not something new, it's never been tried. It's been tried and successful in various places. So I'm interested in keep moving ahead, the staff keep moving ahead, and looking into district energy. I do think it's important to consider whether or not that split will be 50-50 or not. I do wish the port would understand that they are the primary financial beneficiaries by making that property attractive. Their business model is always dependent upon that property turning over into private hands, and they should be doing everything they can to aid and abet, you know, private development. Which kind of brings me to my question. You said the port's not in favor of the developers' plans for the board mill. Why is the port still second-guessing the developer? I mean, all the grief we got during the planning process from the port is, not all, is that, hey, we're trying to make this easy for private developers, and now they have a private developer, and they're second-guessing the developer. I guess I don't understand that. If the board mill would make district energy work, why are they...
Have to talk to McCauley and Briscoe. The port staff is for that. The two port commissioners are not. So those are the ones.
One of the things we have done, based on at least that current position by the Port Commission, is, obviously, we've worked with N-Wave, letting them know that, at this point, that Hotel Conference Center is not likely to be the second building. And even if there is a change in that position by the port, it's going to take some time for that building to come back to the forefront, and so we wanted them to be very aware of that. They're working on what that means in terms of, does that change the capital contribution? Does it increase the city and the port's contribution? Because this whole model is based on the pace of development and the load, and if they don't have a significant square footage, you know, on the back end, the other side of the system, it's square footage and it's also complementary uses. That's how these systems work, you know? One needs heat, one needs cooling. At the same time, it makes it a much more efficient system. So they're going to be giving us more numbers on what does that do. We've got some indication it will likely increase the $2 million capital contribution between the two. So I don't want to leave here thinking that the $2 million is absolute, that would be part of the contribution, or the, I'm sorry, the negotiation, but it's certainly what we have now. The other thing I think is important to know is that, you know, Harcourt has been very interested. It's kind of like everybody. They like the concept, they think it makes a lot of sense. The devil is in the details, and they want to make sure that it's financially viable. They have not indicated a willingness to pay a premium for this type of service, but rather would like to see it be comparable to business as usual. Again, that's all going to come out in the negotiations, and I think the waterfront team, both city and port staff, are going to have a lot to talk about with Harcourt when they come in. We've got meetings set up, and there's a lot that has to come together. In addition to the contribution, you've got to have willing partners all the way around. But at this point, our recommendation is, let's keep moving it forward at least, eyes wide open, knowing that it's got to come, if the council gives us, I think what we're asking for today was, would be a motion to move forward with discussions and perhaps entering into an MOU, again, non-binding, and maybe Matt can help me out with that if I'm not expressing it accurately. But knowing that there's a lot to do, and that we would not be committing counsel to anything at this point, we would come back with the details. At this point, the only thing we've committed to is designing the system, which has been about a $10,000 or $15,000 cost, not insignificant, but in the grand scheme of a $13 million street, not something that we thought we wouldn't want to at least move forward with. Chad, do you have anything, or Matt, that you want to add?
No, I think that's accurate. I think you're with the non-binding MOU and looking for some direction to negotiate that, is my understanding, and enter into it as well.
I have Councilmember Hamill, then Mayor Kelly, then Councilmembers Barker, Murphy, then me, and then Lilliquist.
Will you answer one of my questions as it relates to board mill and how that would affect the capital contribution? I guess I have a more detailed question as it relates to the slide that you had up there showing the piping infrastructure. Does that need to happen alongside the construction of Laurel or Granary and Laurel, or how does that work?
Yeah, it really does. It would be located under a sidewalk. Maybe you want to walk them through just what the cross-section would look like?
Chad Schollhauser, Public Works. That's exactly right. It would take place, that's why we've paid preliminarily for the design with KPFF to incorporate this into their design. We'll be receiving 60% plans next week. This cross-section, then, in the roadways of both Granary and Laurel, would include sewer storm and water utilities, as well as power, natural gas, fiber optic. This is a five-pipe system that we need to know where that's going to go in that right-of-way at this point in time. So that's why we've got them doing the design in there. They're trying to determine where exactly that would fit.
Thank you.
Mayor Kelly?
Just briefly, I think that's, I just want to back up what Ted was saying. I think we can bring you more information that would give you the potential timeline, the feasibility of making sure it works if we're going to invest. And I think then if the council prioritizes that this is something that they want to do, I think that we can probably find the money to do it. It might mean making choices. But I think you need to know, like, how feasible it is in a non-urban environment like Vancouver with all the people. And we're talking about the waterfront, which isn't populated yet, and I'm hoping that the commissioners will change their mind about the board mill, which would make it a lot easier. But that hasn't happened yet.
Councilmember Barker, then Murphy, then Lilliquist.
I can see where we have the policies to support something like this. It's always interesting to sit here and listen to one director come up and say, let's hold the line. I think it was the presentation right before with the biennium, and then... I think it was the presentation right before with the biennium and then get the next one come up and say, maybe we need a million dollars. So this is always so exciting. With the policies there and then we have a council member saying that it doesn't really give the city much except for like a gold star saying we did something really great, another one saying it will help the marketability. I mean, I hear people saying that, but I don't hear staff telling me if either one of those are true. Is what the benefit beyond, is it just a gold star? Is it an economic developer? I mean, I, I get the policies, the policies are absolutely there.
Well, there is a, there is an efficiency to a district-wide system that would result in reduced emissions. So one of the things that the city is striving to do is reduce our overall city emissions, not just from city operations, so our municipal fleet, our buildings, but also citywide, the Community Energy Challenge. It's not an alternative energy source, so it's still fossil fuels, it's using natural gas potentially in the future, some waste heat, which is still the gas-fired Incogem plant, but it's really about efficiencies. And is there enough of an efficiency from a district developing in this way that it's worth the capital investment? I think from staff's perspective, you know, having the same, you know, really struggling with some of the same things that you're talking about, we just had a level of service discussion and we're trying to figure out how to fund, as council member Bornham said, our parks and our other infrastructure at the waterfront. So there's a lot of competing, uh, competing needs. It's not, this particular project is not one that you can look at from a strictly a cost-benefit financial perspective and make a recommendation to do it. If that was the only thing we were looking at, staff would recommend not pursuing it because a 20 or 30-year payback on a very risky venture, meaning pace of development, we probably wouldn't, we wouldn't come to council and say, let's move forward on this. It's all of the other things that have been mentioned here today that make this a project that at this point, because of the overarching policy direction in terms of, you know, healthy environment, reducing emissions, redevelopment of the waterfront, making it a more marketable place, I think there's some value in that. I can't, I could probably turn it over to one of my colleagues that could speak a little bit better to that than I can, but I think it's something we've talked about. There's some value to, to the port, to the city in terms of property tax revenue and making it a place that businesses want to be, economic development. I could turn it over to someone else if they want to come over and up and talk more about that, it's a little up far afield for me, but staff's position, we've talked a lot about this, is there are a lot of things that have to come into place for us to move forward on this and you've got to have all of the partners saying, yep, we're going to do this. And the city's done about all we can do to this point, in my opinion. We have adopted, you have adopted the sub-area plan, spent about $200,000 all total on the utility master planning effort to the state and there's a lot that goes into that, it's a lot of money, but there's some base work that helps with everything that's incorporated in that. But the city's done a lot to say, this is the opportunity, this is undeveloped land. If we can't do it here, you know, where are we going to have the opportunities to make some big lift in terms of how we do business? All that being said, I think now we really do need to have N-Wave and Harcourt and the port really come together. We'll be there, we've, we've done what we can, but at this point, I don't think the city can, can make it happen alone. I know we can't. So our recommendation is a little more lukewarm than we normally would do. I think what we're saying is let, let's, let's see what happens over the next month, but if it doesn't come together, it doesn't come together. If it does, great, we'll come back with documents that we'll bring to the council saying, this is what we can present and see if it's something that the council can approve. But I would just say that we're, we're, we recognize all of the pieces that have to fall into place and we also recognize it's a big dollar amount. You know, a million dollars is a lot of investment. I think we have funds identified that would go to the waterfront. You know, there, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be taking, recommending taking funding away from some other part of the city or some other services that the city provides. This is capital funding that would go to the waterfront, but perhaps go to the waterfront for parks or transportation or other things. It has an impact.
I think that's, for me, that's really helpful because it sounds like you've already spent the amount of money that you were expecting to, to get to that 60% and at this point it's not going to cost you anymore to go sit in conversations and bring back a feasibility like the mayor suggested. It's not a lot of more money you're going to be spending with staff?
That's right. To get, you know, to further the discussions doesn't take any more financial commitment, it's staff time, but we certainly don't want to go do that if that million dollars is a non-starter because we know that that's going to be certainly around what will be asked to contribute as a city and, and N-Wave, they want some type of commitment from the port and the city because they're putting money into it too. And they're not really wanting to spend any more money themselves unless they know they've got partners in the city and the port and Harcourt that are willing to spend money. And after all my looking back to Terry, she came up to help me out a little bit here.
I thought Ted did a great job answering the question. I would say that I definitely do think that an eco-district does have a brand and can be marketed. I don't have like a monetary like this is what that means, but the two parties that have most to gain from that brand are the port of Bellingham and Harcourt. So we need to see them step up and say, yes, let's do this. They both have a lot more control over the pace of development and as Ted mentioned, our, if, if things go well, then we will, that full million dollars will be paid back to the city. But we, so we're, we're in a little riskier position, if you will. But those two parties, if, if they were really eager and stepped forward in the next couple of weeks, I, I think we should think about it more seriously.
So I know this is a tough decision for a lot of us, but this is really about the future and what we want our city to look like long-term and the efficiency, the emissions, the environmental impact, all of those things talk about what kind of city we are. If anybody wants to look at a district energy system, Western has one right up here on the hill, so I encourage people to take a look at it. It's a great system. And with that, I'm going to prepare, I'm going to ask for a motion for the city to investigate the potential for a district energy system. Do I have a second?
Then you can have comments.
Do you have a second? Okay, discussion.
So looking at this now, I feel like this is our opportunity to be a leader and to be progressive. I can hear the concern about where the million dollars would come from, but I think if this is enough of a value in our community, it will work itself out. The details will be worked out and I think that this is an opportunity to build attraction to that waterfront area. We're going to have a lot of work to do to get people used to hanging out in that area and this could be another part of the story that might get people down there because this will be an extension of our downtown. And I want it to be a neat development for people to go down there and experience. And I just have faith and hope that this will work out because I think it could be a neat part of the story of this redevelopment work.
Council member Lilliquist and Bornham.
I think that there are some definite big picture benefits here. We've talked about some of them already. The fact this is a lower emission, more efficient way of delivering energy, but there's something, and, and we also talked about the, the kind of attractiveness component. I've talked to people in the tech sector who are trying to lure, lure tech companies here and they were excited to tell a story about, you know, an energy-efficient, progressive waterfront where they could develop. You know, it's not, it's not theoretical. People want to use those arguments right here, right now, but there, one of the reasons for doing district energy is every time you build a project, you don't have to put in as much infrastructure, heat and cool your own building. There's a direct savings to that building that goes in because it's offloaded some of the utilities onto, you know, all the capital costs onto that utility. And one of the benefits of this, I hope people see, is that the first two buildings are expensive and the third one is less expensive and the fourth one, the payback is better and the fifth one. In other words, this actually is an incentive to full build-out. So the first two buildings have to bear a heavy weight, but every building after that buys into an existing system cheaply. And if I were the property owner, I'd be looking at what happens to the fourth and the fifth and the sixth building and I'd be seeing long-term benefits.
Councilman Bornham.
Yeah, I'll vote to, you know, for it to go forward for discussion as long as the parties know that, before I'll vote for the final agreement, we know where the money is and I'll have to look at what it's against. Michael, you're right. If I'm the property owner, I'm going to look at the benefits, but we're not the property owners. We're not the utility because when we talked about that, we did talk about us possibly looking at that and being the utility because then we get the profits coming back, we might share the, also look at the risks, but we don't get profits coming back from this. We don't get the financial benefit. I agree that this is a good thing, but I also think that we have to look, because we're the ones, if it requires holding back on a million dollars from the parks being delayed and some of that, we're the ones that are going to have to tell our constituents that after all of this time, we're not going to have that now because we spent it on, on this other. And these are choices that we have to make and a million dollars, as we've been discussing, can be a lot, is a lot, you know, to make up. And so, you know, I'll vote for it to have discussions, but as long as the partners know that, some of us will prob, might not vote for it if, depending on the funding and how that's coming through because the port stands to benefit a whole lot more from this than what we do, we want, you know, we'd love to see that, I would love to see that, I think for every reason people have mentioned, but the hard financial basis of it is, you know, we got to look at that, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion in front of us for the discovery of a potential for energy district. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Ted. Okay, so our next item is authorizing the staff to enter a negotiation for a hydropower system at the waterfront district development. During the development of the waterfront district plan, staff investigated the feasibility of a hydropower system as a district-specific utility. Canyon Hydro, a hydropower operator, vetted the site and is seeking development of this system in the waterfront district pursuant to the lease operator agreement with the city. Staff is seeking authorization to negotiate directly with Canyon Hydro in accordance with BMC 4.88. Once terms of agreement are reached, the proposed lease agreement will need to be approved by council at a future meeting. There is an, a, there is an attached memo that has provided background information, but I'm going to turn it over to Ted Carlson again and he can continue that discussion.
Great, thank you. As mentioned previously, this is a concept that was also vetted through both the sub-area plan and that waterfront utility master plan. And again, just like the previous item, the conclusion was it made some sense to pursue, but not have the city operate it. Again, pursue a private party that has expertise in operating hydro facilities and have them operate the facility. Early on in the process, there was a concept of potentially putting a hydro facility in the basement of the grain rebuilding and there were hydro operators working with Harcourt and one of the earlier ideas was that Harcourt would be through their subcontractors, the operator and the, and the, and the entity to house the hydro facility, that the piping from the industrial pipeline would simply be brought over to the grain rebuilding and that would be a great place for the hydro facility and we would pursue that. Upon, upon further review of the grain rebuilding itself, there were some concerns about the structural impacts of having a hydro facility in that building itself and Harcourt was not interested in pursuing it any further once they knew more about the building and the impacts of the hydro in the building. But the operator that they had engaged, Hydro, Canyon Hydro, was very interested in continuing the discussion and running the hydro facility somewhere else on the waterfront. So we've been working with them. They have offered to be a partner in this venture in terms of contributing the hydro equipment, the turbines and the actual hydro facility itself. They would then operate that facility and there would be some type of a lease agreement that would deal with when it was operational, what would happen with the power and what the revenue sharing would be, the cost of the water to run the hydro facility, how we would deal with all of those specifics is yet to be determined. What's before the council today is to get authorization to pursue this direct lease negotiation tile, style of procurement. We think it makes the most sense, given some of the particulars of the waterfront. One, that Canyon Hydro was involved early on with Harcourt, that they went through a process with Harcourt to become the hydro operator that was pursuing it when it was in, the concept was in the grain rebuilding. We do have a relationship with Canyon Hydro. They operate the hydro facility on our diversion pipeline. We call it the Hutchinson Creek Hydro Facility. I believe the council, all the councils are aware, the city already has a hydro facility on our diversion pipeline that comes from the Middle Fork down to Lake Wacombe. So we already have a relationship with Canyon Hydro and Canyon Hydro has already applied for a permit for a hydro facility at this location of the waterfront. So there's several factors that make them, we believe, an ideal partner. We are allowed under the BMC to do direct lease negotiations. It's something we've done in the past, but it does take approval from the council to pursue that. Matt is here, he can perhaps add some particulars to that, but essentially we would like authorization through a motion from the committee of the whole and I believe full council has to take action tonight on this, that the council supports direct negotiation as a form of procurement. Council would certainly have the opportunity to approve the final agreement and it's a requirement that it would come back to council and all of the contract specifics would come back to council for your final approval. So at this point, it's simply approval to move forward with this type of negotiation. Matt, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, Matt Stamps, legal department. One of the nuances here, I may have just misheard Ted, but the vote, the motion to approve direct negotiations for a lease arrangement on city property, to pursue that method as opposed to another method, only needs to be approved by committee today and then the, the draft lease then would come back for full council consideration at a later time. So it's just a committee vote that would be needed today.
Council members Lilliquist and Barker.
Well, I'm in support of clean energy options and this is one of those options that people in the community bring up, why don't, you know, smaller scale hydropower. City Portland just put in a small-scale hydropower, one of their larger pipes. This is one of the places where we actually have the gravity fee that we can do this. You, you can't put these in small pipes all over the city. We spend a lot of energy pushing water uphill, you know, we spend money moving water uphill. This is the one place where we get, you know, gravity providing us with free energy. So I'm definitely in support of pursuing direct lease negotiations and we'll see how that comes out. So I'd move that we pursue direct lease negotiations.
Second. Okay, we have a motion for us, council member Barker and then myself, council member Bornham and Lilliquist.
This says for agreement in a future city park on the waterfront, so I'm interested in noise and space. Can you help me with those two things impacting our waterfront park land?
Yeah, we, we have not identified a final location, but given what we know of the waterfront property, the likelihood of future park land dedication, we believe that somewhere in a future park makes sense. It would be a fairly small, do you have a footprint?
We don't have a footprint right now. We would look at the, the park that's kind of proposed for the central part of the site, small building there, you know, kind of what we're dealing with up at the cell tower right now. We're looking at 20 by 20 buildings, just roughly, so that's kind of what our footprint is right now, but that's very, very preliminary. And noise would obviously be a consideration as we go through this, but I have no data on that whatsoever right now.
Okay, I got a, I have a couple of questions. So if we did a hydro facility, do we get net metering dollars back to the city or if we're leasing it, that goes to the, to the hydro that, or to Canon that's running it or does it go to the city?
That would be part of the negotiation. So for instance, with our agreement on Hutchinson Creek, we get a percentage of the revenue above a certain dollar amount. So we would have to take in consideration the dollar amount we receive by selling the water to Canyon Hydro and also consider what we would get in terms of some amount of Hydro and also consider what we would get in terms of some amount of revenue from the energy sales back to the grid. That's all to be negotiated out at this point. So, that would be part of what's brought back to the council for final approval. I would say, we've done quite a bit of analysis on what we think the opportunity is in terms of revenue and how often this facility could be operational. There are some very significant constraints on when we would be able to run the hydro facility. And Canyon Hydro is very much aware of that. We did a, an analysis looking at when we would be able to run water down the industrial pipeline. It has to do with when we divert water from the Middle Fork. So, in essence, we would only be running the facility in the winter when we're using the lake more or less as flood control and storage. A whole bunch of criteria would have to be met, including minimum flows in Lake Wacom for, I'm sorry, in Wacom Creek for habitat. Obviously, all of our storage requirements in the lake. And then, again, no nexus to the Middle Fork. We would not run it if we're diverting from the Middle Fork at all. So, that's a very important distinction. So, all of those factors have been clearly identified and shared with Canyon Hydro. And even with that, they are interested in moving forward. One of the items that I failed to mention is that the city does have some grant revenue from Northwest Clean Air Act, or Clean Air Agency, about $760,000 that's specifically identified for projects like this one where we're reducing the reliance on fossil fuels. So, we have an agreement, a memorandum with them to pursue this hydro facility. We went down, I think earlier this year, and updated our proposal to them on this particular project and they're very supportive of it. It's one of the reasons why the city is recommending moving forward with this, because using that grant revenue to fund the city's contribution, which would be the building, and then Canyon Hydro's contribution, which is the actual turbine and inner workings of the hydro facility.
Council member Bornham and Lillicust.
Yeah, this, this one's much easier for me to approve. One, it's not gonna cost us a bunch of money to get into it. We could get revenue back from it. This is a work, we have established as part of the plan that this is a working waterfront. So, there will be industrial kinds of different noises to be expected along with that. And, and the limitations of when it can run, I think, will, will impede less with, with most of the people being there, although Bellingham's hardcore, they'll be out on the waterfront anytime you can be there. But, so, I can support this one. This is.
Council member Lillicust.
Thank you. Actually, Ted already brought up the point I was gonna bring up and ask about, that this work has been funded with grant money that we've already received. He refers to a report that you can ask for a copy, done about two years ago, I believe, that looked into the feasibility based on water flow. So, there's a lot of foundation that's been actually paid for already and not out of our general fund, not, not drawing away from any of our city needs. The question is, how much of the three quarters of a million dollars have we used on the studies and preliminary work at this point?
We haven't. We, we did fund the study with utility money. So, the 760,000, what we have is an agreement with Northwest Clean Air to pursue a future interlocal or some type of a funding agreement. So, we, we have yet to sign that actual financing funding agreement. We have an agreement to move forward with this concept and come back to them once we've got it more refined. And then they would, we'd enter into some type of an interlocal agreement with them. But, we haven't spent any of the grant money at this point.
Okay, great.
Council member Murphy.
I just think the last two agenda items are exciting and I support this one.
Council member Barker.
So, during, during your negotiations, I, the reason why I mention noise is because we already have all kinds of noise issues. We possibly will have some residents. We don't exactly know the location, so it could go upwind. People above usually hear more. I would just, I would almost feel like I have to abstain just because you can't, we can't, we haven't been able to tell me how much noise these things generate. And I guess if there is room in your negotiations to make sure we're mitigating that as much as possible. I mean, we've had people upset just with the color of lights and, and the animals that it could impact. So, I just have a feeling this is gonna come back and I'd really like to make sure that we have discussed that and, and we're gonna be mitigating for that.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a good point. We will be designing and building the building itself. Part of the relationship with Canyon Hydro will be a lease agreement. Well, there'll be, there'll be leasing space within our building. So, we'll have full control over the design of the building. Certainly take that into consideration. Absolutely, noise and visual impacts and everything else that we understand is, is something that people will definitely care about.
I, I have a different outlook, I guess, when it comes to visibility of energy. I actually think that it would behoove us to highlight the fact that we're using different energy. Is, for example, the city of Vancouver, they, their district energy system has an amazing lighting system on a hand that shows how much energy people are using. They have an education center that talks about the benefits of district energy. So, I would like to have visibility on a hydro and on a district energy. So, that's just my, I think that energy education is an important thing that we've been disconnected from. So, that's just my opinion, but I think visibility is actually important. Any other discussion? If not, I will, gonna call for the vote. No? Okay, so we have a motion in front of us to authorize the staff to enter a negotiation for a hydropower system at the waterfront district development. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much Ted. That was item number four. We have two left. So, we are on to the next topic, which is the illegal residential units and enforcement strategies update. In response to longstanding concerns in the community, the planning and community development department has been developing and implementing a coordinated strategy to address the current illegal units located within residential districts. This strategy acknowledges the complexity associated with the enforcement of adopted regulations and is focused on the implementation of three key elements. The adoption implementation of a town gown program, the implementation of rental registration and safety inspection program, and an enhanced enforcement, an enhanced enforcement effort to identify and bring into compliance where possible illegal units. This update is to provide a status report on these efforts and I am gonna turn it over to Rick Sepler, our planning and community development director.
Good to speak with you again, members of the council. I come before you to discuss the illegal residential unit. It's a issue that has had a great deal of time in these chambers. And it's one that causes a great deal of consternation and emotion. I'll step back before I go into that presentation and just talk a little bit about enforcement in general to set the stage. Adopting rules that aren't implemented is contrary to the community's interest. And it's important to remember that the vast majority of land use rules are followed by folks. And our approach has always been, as most communities, is you look for voluntary compliance. Folks become aware, they know what the rules are, they follow by the rules. However, when folks don't follow by the rules, like most planning and community development departments, we rely on a complaint-based basis to respond to those issues. We prioritize those complaints when they come in and we really immediately go to the ones that are life safety or the ones that threaten the environment. It's instant action because there's great risk to it. Others are investigated in order of priority. We assign a planner, we visit the site, we do work to address those issues. This year, we've processed about 296 complaints. Of those, 93 have been closed so far. 64 of those complaints were on rental registration. All but six of those 64 have been addressed. 12 complaints have been on illegal units or on violation of the rule of three of the family definition. I want to give you a perspective too in the number of complaints. The city of San Francisco has about 500 complaints in a whole year that they track. So, we have a very high volume of complaints.
Rick, can I ask you, can you repeat those numbers again for me?
Sure. I can actually give you the report on that too if you'd like.
Okay, just for tonight, so that I can say this.
296 complaints, 93 have been closed. 64 of those 296 were associated with rental registration. We followed up on those. All but six of those have been addressed. Where we had a registration violation, folks didn't register, we got them on the listing. And there were 12 so far to date that have been submitted dealing with violations of illegal units or violation of the family definition. So, the key issue is when we do look at that, really, is we have illegal units that were established in residential zoning, both attached and detached to the primary residence. And we have that violation of our family definition. What I'm gonna do today is I'm gonna walk through those issues and talk about what our status is to enforce them. I'll also talk about what's coming up, it's on deck, new resources we're bringing to address the issues themselves. We'll start with the illegal units. Illegal units are units that are, we like to say, built or occupied without benefit of permit. They were either established without permits or not in compliance with our land use regulations at the time of construction. There are no illegal ADUs, because that's a conflictual term. ADUs can only be lawfully established. So, what many people say illegal ADUs, they're just illegal units. They've never been given the right to be an accessory dwelling unit. And some illegal properties may include multiple rental units. In terms of dealing with the illegal units, we deal on a case-by-case basis. And that's pretty true for most planning and community development departments in Washington. Enforcement is somewhat difficult because each one has a unique fact pattern. We'd have to figure out when that unit was established and what the codes were in place at the time. Many are longstanding. Some are more recent, they're a little easier for us to deal with. It is legal to have multiple bedrooms and separate attached or attached structures on a property that's owned multifamily. The mere presence of a high number of bedrooms, bathrooms, dryers is not categorical and would not be the basis for enforcement. All right? I think it's important that we note that in our system, folks are innocent until proven guilty. And just the appearance that they could do something wrong doesn't mean we can enforce against them. We have to actually get the facts of them breaking the rules. And anyone's entitled to build as much on their home as they wish to, provided they meet our codes in terms of lock coverage, heights, bulk and dimension standards themselves. Each complaint is investigated by staff. However, there are some very simple steps that could be used to evade a complete and accurate accounting of rental units. We write a letter or contact the property owner. We say, it appears there's a unit in back over the garage. It appears it's a rental property. And say, no, my son lives there. That stops us. In terms of the family definition, council is familiar. It says, one or more persons related by blood, marriage or adoption, or not more than three unrelated people. That three unrelated is a challenge. Right now, we address it on a case-by-case basis. Again, there are very simple steps someone could take to evade an accurate accounting of who lives there. And it is very difficult without a very costly and expensive process, determine who really is resident on site. We can't go and demand to see, I want to see the lease. Please show me your driver's license. Give me your tax returns. We're just not able to do that. And I would liken those who advocate we do that, if we came to your door and asked for it, you'd tell us where we could go. The real issues here are in terms of enforcement. The core issues that we really have to tackle and bring new tools to are the following. In many cases, there are these illegal units, those that have more than three, and they create behaviors that follow. Noise and parties, litter, traffic and congestion. That's really the symptom we're after. And in terms of the family definition, it's the limits of using that family definition. Again, so hard to monitor. And the solution may rely less on how we enforce the definition of family rather than dealing with the outcomes that are, we're trying to avoid and the things we're trying to reinforce through policies and programs. There are two tracks we're working on right now. One is the traditional approach dealing with illegal units, and we're bringing resources to bear. The first is, we've allocated additional resource, council is aware, through budget amendment, we assembled someone. We've never had a dedicated person to do the research on these. They're going to take time to look at each of the individual ones. And as I've mentioned before, they're like snowflakes. Each one's unique. We have to find the fact pattern. We have to see what was established. We have to get to the bottom to it. But we're committed to doing that so we can reach closure on those issues and put them behind us. We're gonna use new data. We are able to use the data from our rental registration, it's public record. And we'll do a search to see the number of units on land that's single family and see if we have permitting on it. We also can use GIS analysis of existing multifamily or addresses that are shown to have multifamily housing in single family districts to see if they were legally established and we have a record of those. We can monitor listings and we can notify those who list, on Craigslist and others, that you can't advertise a room by itself. You can't say it's $500 a bedroom. That's very similar to what you do when you deal with the vacation rental issue. It's the way you get to the bottom of the core of the problem by eliminating the ability to advertise the units themselves. And we will be persistent in our follow-up. I don't know what kind of traction we have. We are committed to doing that. We think we can bring some new tools to the process and we're hopeful we can address some of the issues, but certainly not all of them. That brings up the second approach, and we think there's much more upside to this one. And that is to implement the town gown program. I'd like to say, we had hoped to be before you this September with that draft program for your consideration. The only reason we're not is the Western Washington University personnel who staffed the campus community coalition, Carmen Rasmussen, left the position. The position was vacant since the summer. The position has just been filled. And we need that partner to participate in developing the program before we bring it forward. We are now moving forward since that position's been filled. The town gown really looks at three key approaches. The first is education, that in model circumstances in other communities, getting to the folks early and setting the expectation, very early about how one works and lives in, in Bellingham, when you study here, if you're a student, has yielded great fruit elsewhere. And they've found that they've been able to get an increased awareness about what the rules are, fitting into neighborhoods, what to look for. The second is to develop better tools in terms of enforcement. And that is to deal with simplifying some of our nuisance requirements so we can be more responsive on that. The third is to address those key behaviors that we identified before that seem to be the symptom that comes out of higher density or some of the illegal units. And that is noise and parties. We think a party registration program, similar to the one employed in Colorado State University, might be a very good fit and might very well allow us to, folks should have parties. They just can't have parties every day. We also think that the student code of ethics, we'd request that that be extended off campus. I know that was done in Corvallis and Oregon State. It means that if you're a bad actor in a neighborhood, it affects you not just there, but also affects your education, as the school's aware. We think that parking and traffic can be addressed through potential RPZs and wish to explore how to implement those residential parking zones. And we think that the revised nuisance code would let us deal with the abandonment of materials, litter and other issues. So, our next steps is to hire and train the planner that will support enforcement. That'll give us the research arm to really dig mine down and get to the facts we need on that, to pursue the new data that's available, and contact those owners whose units appear to be illegal, to monitor the rental listings and complete development of the town gown program and implement it. We think these are reasoned steps that could bring us forward to get closer to compliance on those rules. And certainly honor the intent of what the regulations were trying to achieve. I do have a postscript on that and I have to apologize to council. In a prior presentation last week, I inadvertently gave you incorrect numbers on the rental units. It was my error. We have a system that was designed for scheduling, not designed to give us the outcome of how many are pending. That's a different program. And we should, I should have used that to find it. This is very accurate. We did a hand count. As of the 23rd, we had inspected 478 rental units. 383 rental units had passed the inspections. That's a pass rate of 80%. If you look at the pie chart below, 50% passed the very first time. Another 30% came along on the second or third time. And finally, 95 units still have not passed and we're working with them right now. So, it's a snapshot and that's more correct information for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the illegal units, the issue before us, the enforcement strategy or how we're proceeding.
Thank you, Rick. Council member Murphy, Lillicust and Hammer.
I just want to thank you for this update. You know, something that I have been begging for since I joined this council is nuisance abatement. Because I think that nuisance abatement cleanups go so far in creating a more livable neighborhood and that creates safer neighborhoods and communities. So, I think that there's so much we can do to support that, along with all the other work to get better residential units in our neighborhoods. And then also just provide a better quality of life in And then also just provide a better quality of life in our neighborhoods. So thank you for focusing. Yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So as you probably heard at a recent neighborhood forum, enforcement of some of these residential codes was a big topic or what was perceived as inadequate enforcement. So I'm glad this is getting an airing at this level. I have a comment on the question. The comment is that the town gown program, students are not necessarily the problem. There are other people who also may be looking for units that turn out to be illegal. So even if we educate every incoming Western student, you know, I think we're still missing part of the population. I have a more technical question. You said one of the problems with enforcement has to do with there are just certain legal barriers that we can't keep going. We can't keep poking. We can't snoop inside any further if we don't have the right kind of cause. And so that's my question. What is the legal standard to pursue further investigation or to cite someone? Is it probable cause? Is it reasonable suspicion? And then also, is it the same for when we're pursuing these nuisance regulations? Is it easier standard? And when we're pursuing a zoning violation? Is that a different standard? What standards do we have to use to keep going forward to investigate into site?
I'm going to defer to Alan on the legal basis on that. What I can say is the fundamental challenge is we can't just go and count cores and say there are 12 cores there, so there must be 12 people there. That's not definitive proof. I could say at Colorado State, one of the lessons we learned is they have three people working full time funded by the college to deal with the family definition. They've been successful in court once. It's very difficult to be able to be categorical and conclusive in that. But I'll defer to Alan in terms of what the basis might be.
Well, there are two ways we could pursue. One was with civil penalties. And the other would be with criminal. Criminal is, I think Rick said, you know, that would be beyond a reasonable doubt. Our code is also not written in a way where we could actually, it would be talking to our criminal side of the office that the codes are not written in a way where we could actually charge somebody with a misdemeanor because they're violating the rule of three because just the way the code is written. It's not written as a criminal law with clear, you know, it's not even clear who do you charge? Is it the owner? Is it the tenant? That kind of thing. I think the big problem if we were to proceed on a civil basis is the amount of resources it would take to win one single case. If you knocked on the door, you sent them a letter saying, hey, we think you're in violation of the rule of three. They have no obligation to disclose who's living there, the lease, that kind of thing. You would only get that information if you continued proceeding in a legal lawsuit where you'd have the right to discovery. And the cost of doing that in just one case is very, very significant. So it's not just a matter of, I think right now, we do send letters saying we've gotten the complaint. We think you're in violation of the rule of three. And they either correct the situation or they say, no, we're not. And that's generally where it stops because we do not have the resources to then proceed past that.
That seems broken. Is there a way to fix that by rewriting the standards that are used to cite? Or the standards that are used to convict or?
You could rewrite the standards. That doesn't solve the problem of resources as far as what it would take to prevail in one case if, in that case, the persons that are being complained about are not cooperating.
Rick?
If I might just follow up on that. I'd mentioned before the International Town Gown Association, the 220 cities and their colleges. The strategies we're advancing, they face this too. That was based on the Supreme Court decision about setting a limit on the number of family residents. And all of them have had very limited success in enforcing that. It's a very challenging law to enforce. And they've tried a variety of approaches. What we're bringing forward is a combination of the lessons learned, the best strategies that have worked elsewhere. And that's both in the traditional one of trying to do some targeting, cutting off some of the advertising, following up the providence of the illegally established units to see if they were legal, if not, to get them extinguished. And then to do an educational component. I acknowledge, Michael, too, your comment that not all the issues are students. But there are 10,000 students who reside in the neighborhoods that are attending it. So it's a significant component part. So I'd say it's not one magic bullet that's going to address this, but we're advancing because we take this seriously. The neighborhoods deserve to have a reasoned place to be. And residents should have an expectation of a quality of life. And we can establish that. But it's not going to be one magic bullet or strict enforcement. It's going to be many, many things.
Councilmember Hamel, then Barker, then Bornham.
Thank you for your presentation today, Rick. On page three, you've got the definition of illegal units. You talk about residential uses that were established without permits. What I'm concerned with are the ones that were established with permits that skirted rules in terms of building multiple bedrooms into a single family, what would otherwise be a single family home. There are two good examples. On the 1600 block of Iron Street, a developer bought three lots of property, put in two mega houses that were advertised as five bedrooms with two bonus bedrooms, whatever that means. So what it translated to though was seven people now living in each house. And so now the attendant issues of traffic and noise, those are all real for those residents that live along Iron Street there. So what tools? Are there any tools that we have that can stop this activity? Which is completely, to me, it's like they're just going right around the legal component of it and profiting off of this.
So I'll try to take it apart piece by piece. And we can talk about the options that remain. The first is we cannot stop a seven bedroom, two bonus room house from being built. If it meets bulk and dimensional requirements, if it doesn't have too much lock coverage, folks have the right to do that. Any of us have the right to do that without explanation if it meets the code. It's the occupancy of those by the seven students that would violate it. In the case where it came to our attention, they were advertising individual units. We had them retract that ad. And we had a, as part of the building permit, we issued a notice to title that made it very clear this cannot be used for multiple occupancies beyond the definition of family. But it does get back to the same enforcement issue that we've had before. I do think that that market fortunately is changing. The addition of the 640 beds in North by Northwest, I should tell you, it was 100% filled two months ago with a waiting list. And the new project coming on between Forest and Garden will change substantially. That's 10%. Some over 1,000 beds coming online will change the market. And in many cases, our experience from what we found in Fort Collins is a number of single family homes came back on. Those purpose-built houses are troubling. And one way we were thinking of going through it is an RPZ that limits the number of parking spaces assigned per house. And that's a reasoned approach because it's true elsewhere. That might very well be a way to eliminate higher occupancy.
Councilmember Barker, then Bornham.
Well, I first want to thank the leadership. I think we, of course, have never had somebody dedicated. Thank you to the mayor and the director for finally getting that position and filling that position. I think we're going to see, we're going to see people feeling like they're being heard and having a place to go and get also a lot more consistent information when it's coming from one person and not whatever staff is available. I caution the council as we move forward to really remember this. And I think many councils were very well intentioned before us, listening to the community and trying to find policies that might protect the community and people's investment. But we've done it in a way that we have these things we just can't enforce. And then we have community members come forward and we lose trust in the city because we say, well, it's a policy and it's there. And we realize you supported it, but we can't do anything about it. It can be easily thwarted. And so it's where I kind of go back to that, like us being a team. And as we move forward and look at alternative housing types and infill, that we can really dig down. We can unpack the concerns of the community, get down to what it is people want us to enforce, figure out what we can enforce, and then make those ordinances and policies. Because we have a legacy here of things that we just can't enforce. And so we end up, staff's trying to accommodate council, and we end up chasing our tail and disappointing our community. So we have a lot that's going to come forward. And I just really hope that we work with those that are concerned. We work with our staff. We work with our lawyers. We really figure out what can we enforce and get the best outcome.
Councilmember Bornham?
Yeah. I've got a comment and then a question. On the idea about the nuisance abatement attempts and stuff, I really hope this is going to work and things. But I have to say, for 16 years that I've been bringing up trying to enforce some of the issues around the three unrelated and the illegal dwelling units, I have heard over and over, well, we're going to attack the nuisance issues. We've got laws in place that are already there to deal with the nuisance issues. And that's been 16 years I've heard that same thing. And right now, I'm hearing, and this isn't a criticism of you, Rick, because I think you really hope this will work. And I hope it'll work too. But I'm hearing the same thing I've heard for under, I don't know how many planning directors now, that same thing, that we're going to address the nuisance things because we've got rules in place. But there's never any enforcement of it. You know, there's, for 16 years, we have not, people have brought complaints about illegal dwelling units. And almost none of them have been enforced. And there would be a lot more this year complaints if people knew that they were going to be enforced. And I do appreciate the last couple that I brought forward that have been looked into and a letter's been issued. So I'm hoping that that trend will continue and this will work. But we still have to deal with those issues. On Dan's question about the numbers of bedrooms, and we say they can build as many as they want. But I think that is limited because of our code and law. We have passed an ordinance in multifamily units to limit the number of bedrooms in duplexes to four, to three. You can't have more than three bedrooms. And so if that is possible in the multifamily, why wouldn't it be possible for us to pass an ordinance that says no more than three or no more than four bedrooms in a single family home in a single family neighborhood? Thus, going after the illegal boarding homes. Because these are boarding homes. They're not single family homes. We know that. And they can call it what they want. We send a letter when they're advertising by the room. And they say, oh, okay, we've changed that. They're still doing it, but they'll assign it to somebody else. And they're still, you know, it's still a boarding house. So is that possible? Is it possible for us to say by ordinance, how many bedrooms are allowed in a zoning area? Just kind of curious. Because we did it on the multifamily one.
There have been instances where limitations have been established, usually for environmental reasons in terms of carrying capacity, sewage, other things of that nature. You have to have a compelling public purpose. You would not be able to single out neighborhoods and say they get the special prohibition unless you had a compelling public purpose. And others don't. So it's a broader issue. The consequence might be that you could solve it here. But I'm sure you'd hear from a number of folks who'd say legitimately, they'd want to put more bedrooms in their home and don't want to be constrained. It's an approach I could look and see if someone has done it specifically for character issues. And we'd have to go and develop a policy base to support it.
Okay. I'm curious. You know, we're looking at ways to go after the people like the Hanson's that build these illegal boarding homes. You know, I mean, it's a problem in the neighborhoods. And we're trying to find some solutions that work, that work, you know?
Yeah. I would say that I think that you could put those kinds of restrictions. You'd hear from other people who, for whatever reason, based on their family size or whatever, have legitimate reasons for wanting to have more than, let's say, four bedrooms. We do a similar thing with house size. There's a certain square footage that if you're over that square footage, so we do put a limit, you've got to go, is it 5,500? You've got to go before the hearing examiner, I believe, get a conditional use permit. So you have to explain what you're doing. And then the hearing examiner puts appropriate conditions on moving forward with that size house.
Me then, Michael. So several of us were at the York Neighborhood Association meeting, like Michael said, last week. And enforcement was definitely the number one vocal issue. And I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can look at what we're doing in our policy to figure it out. Because to the public, it looks as though we are not doing enforcement. We are. We just have legal implications that stop us from going any farther and actually prohibiting some of these things. So I'm just wondering if there is, we can look at this in a different format to figure out how we can have more enforcement and maybe even work with the public. And I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but maybe including some crowdsourcing in regards to what's happening in a neighborhood. So I don't know if that would be allowed or not, or if that's completely taboo. But I know that there are lots of neighborhoods who are very much paying attention to what's happening in their neighborhood. And that's where a lot of the information comes from. So I'm just wondering if we can explore other ways for enforcement to stick and not it be pulled into a whole legal obligation that we can't afford or don't have the resources for. So I guess I'm just asking if we can look more at how we can do enforcement. Michael, I see you. Kelly, did you have a point on that?
Well, and obviously, there's always more, as Alan was explaining, we could do. But I think that was Rick's point today is to show you places where we're trying to emphasize where we wanted to do more than what we're doing now. And especially with increased personnel that we're going to have that we haven't had before. It also means compliance officers that, you know, I mean, a lot of it is the resources that we want to put behind this. And so I think getting more information on maybe number of complaints or letting some of these actions take place to see if there's some noticeable difference will help us decide, you know, where we make significant investments in what is concerning our community. So I think that was, I think that was your point. Is that your point?
I guess. Well, I guess what you're hearing is we take it seriously. We have a strategy. We're implementing the strategy. It takes time to do it. I would be disingenuous to stand before you and say, these roadblocks that we identified wouldn't be there. We're trying our workarounds on it. A number of ideas came out that could be explored if we're not successful. But we're committed to do it. And we've been committed to do it for the last year. And I think we demonstrated that with rental registration and inspection, that we're going to implement it. We're going to implement it fairly. We're going to follow up on it. And we're going to enforce the folks who don't do it. And that's been the track record. Now, we have to earn trust. And that'll be how well these programs go. But I'm encouraged that, you know, we haven't just responded since last Tuesday. We've been working diligently for the last year once these issues were identified. And candidly, those issues have traction with us. Some of the egregious stories that came back, we've heard, are not something that we think anyone should have to deal with. That's why we started this track of trying to implement them. So I guess the jury is out. We'd like to come back and give you an update on how they work. I think you will find that there might be pushback that you'll hear during public comment. Not on, many will support the efforts. But those will say they bought a unit 25 years ago. It had an accessory dwelling unit. And you're telling me now that's illegal and can't be made legal. And we'll have to deal with those kind of issues.
Councilmember Lilliquist, then Bornham, then Barker?
Yeah, I guess I want to keep clear in our minds that when we're talking about nuisance regulations, regulations, that applies to everyone, everywhere, single-family and multifamily, but there's something special about the zoning issues, because those are violations of the rules that apply in the single-family area. Let's take this, the mega house on Iron Street. You could actually build a much bigger building than that. You could build 600 units if you just put it in a place where it's properly zoned. There's no one stopping people from developing large buildings where you put lots of people. You just do it in multifamily zones. Turns out that 2/3 of the city residents live on only 1/3 of our residential land. That's multifamily, which means the other way around. 1/3 of our people are living on 2/3 of the land, that's our single-family. Another way of looking at that is, there's nine times the density in multifamily areas. There's plenty of places to put, well, we just heard about, 1,000 new units. You just don't do them illegally in single-family zones. You don't skirt the law, you don't play funny with the rules. My personal belief is that I think the administration needs to consider making an example out of an egregious violator, that it may not make sense to spend all the money on one case, it'll take a lot of work to do, but we need believable enforcement, and maybe we need to make an example of someone. And this is not about going against densities, going against violators. That's my thinking on the matter.
Councilmember Bornham. Yeah. Well, you had said pinky about maybe we need to engage the neighborhoods about enforcement. Well, I think that that's happening. I was at the Seehome Neighborhood Board Meeting the other day, and they're putting together a committee to have people, since this is going to be based on complaint-driven, a committee that's going to be walking the neighborhoods and taking notes and watching and start reporting and follow up to see if actions are being taken. And this is just the one neighborhood. I'm assuming that's going, that idea has been starting, knowing how the networks are working right now, it'll probably be coming in other neighborhoods as well. So I think that that's, that idea of, and this is something I know the neighborhoods have talked about for a long time, of not wanting to have to do, of having to be the policeman about neighbors and stuff, but if, I think, feeling if this is what it takes to get stuff out, that's what they're doing right now. Councilmember Murphy, and then I'm going to wrap this up, because we still have a couple more things to get through before the end of today.
I just wanted to explain quickly my background in nuisance abatement. So I used to work for a municipality and live in a neighborhood that was really blighted and had junk in all of the yards, and it was an area where people were buying up properties and just hoping to improve the neighborhood. So the city that I lived in strengthened the nuisance abatement issue, and they strengthened the code in relation to that to help clean up these properties. So what they agreed to do was that any property that was reported would get a notice, and it would create a timeframe within which the property owner could clean up the property, address the issue, do whatever it had to do. Issue resolved, issue done. If the property owner did nothing, then after a certain timeframe had gone by, the city could go in and have the option of cleaning up the property. That would get charged back to the property owner. If the property owner didn't pay for it, a lien would go on the property. The notice about this going out to the community that was reported in the media caused major neighborhood cleanups to happen all on its own. So there were truckloads of junk coming out of my neighborhood alone and other neighborhoods. And there was really nervousness on the part of the council that voted for this, that the city would have to pay so much for the staff that would do the cleanups. At that point, they found 90% compliance without staff doing any cleanups. So I just think there's a lot of voluntary compliance that can happen if we just have the strength to strengthen the code. So I hope that's something we'll look at, because the neighborhoods actually felt like the city cared about them.
Alan.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment about, to Michael's suggestion of choosing one bad actor and making an example. That raises a variety of legal issues with regards to selective enforcement, so I just wanted to comment on that, that...
They would nominate themselves by their own misbehavior.
Saying that selectively choosing one bad actor to enforce against could create some problems for us legally.
Okay. Mayor Kelly.
I have a comment and a suggestion. I'll use my suggestion first. This is a continuation, number six, of a discussion on the Parks Plan, and I would recommend that we hold this over for the next meeting.
It's already 5:00. We do have to be back here at 7:00.
So, I mean, it was a...
We have a public hearing scheduled for October 17. We don't have it. Could we do it this evening?
Can we do it this evening and maybe instead of now? The discussion?
Councilmembers Murphy, then Barker.
I'm just worried about any community members that came here specifically for that.
Okay, I understand. Gotcha. Then the second thing is, I think what Sam was talking about, and I'd like to follow up on this when we have a little teeny bit more time, is enforcing nuisances that people saw in their neighborhoods. It wasn't enforcing something that's difficult to enforce. So that's why I'd like to let the nuisance enforcement proceed, because the other is harder. But at least if we're getting the effects of having too many people living in one spot, we need to take care of that as soon as possible. Secondly, in case there was any misunderstanding, the city does care about the neighborhoods. There's not a disregard about the neighborhoods. So please, community members, don't think that the city doesn't.
Councilmember Parker.
I was going to give my two cents about this. I would appreciate just hearing, since we already noticed it, I would like to hear what staff has to say. And we had another planning situation where we had barely any time, and then we just submitted all of our comments, and we heard back from them from the comment tracker. So for those that are at home and have been sitting and waiting, and those that came, could we agree to do that, listen to staff's comments?
I've got to leave at 5:15, but it's up to you guys. So we are going to agree to proceed, then?
We are doing a shift for the people that came. I'm...
Okay, just very briefly, what we included in your packet is an update to the trail map. We realized that through a GIS glitch, when we updated the map to show trails that had been built since, there were a few dropped off, so that map is amended to show those. We took all of the comments that came up at your work session last week and included them in the public comment tracker. We also are doing a word search of the document to look for other places where the word "equal" exists, so we can change that to "equitable." And all the other proposals, if you've reviewed number 68 through 74 on the council recommendations for the comment tracker, we could deal with those if you have changes. But I won't go through each one individually.
Councilmember Lilikus.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 69 through 74 on the comment tracker. If you look at them, basically, the staff was just suggesting altered language in line with what we already talked about.
Second. 74, I'm sorry.
Yes, 69 through 74.
A motion in front of us, and a second. Any discussion? Okay. So the motion is to pass all the amended changes to the plan. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
And Lisa Poole has a few comments.
I have two very short slides, just to fill you in on the process, to let you know that the public comment tracker right now includes 196 comments as of today. Comments from 8/18, which is the last date of the last tracker you received, up until the 28th, which is Wednesday, will be in the packet for the public hearing for you. The written record, this date is wrong, I'm sorry, I had sent an updated, but I will get it online and I'll also send it out to our comp plan list. The written record actually will close on October 20th, which is a few days after the public hearing. And that way, comments from the public hearing will then be responded to staff during your 10/24 work session. And this just shows you an overview. Updated chapters with council's recommendations will be posted this week on the comp plan page. The public hearing is on the 17th. Again, that date's wrong. The written record will close on 10/20. 10/24, you'll complete your review of the written record. That's why we're having the record close before 10/24. We're hoping you'll complete your review of the written record at that time. And then on the 24th, council hopefully will direct staff to bring forward an adopting ordinance for November 7th, and then we're hoping that we'll adopt on that date. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Lilikus.
Could you go back one slide? I'm wondering if there's an opportunity between now and the hearing for the city council to discuss other possible changes? Are we out of time?
Believe we are out of time.
Okay, well, it is, there are still some things I would like to discuss. Today is not the day to discuss them, but I don't know how that's going to get done or when that can get done.
Can we not just add it to our next, oh, wait, our next meeting's on the 10th, right? So our next city council meeting is on the 10th. Could we not have an opportunity on the 10th?
If I might, you would not be able to have a draft updated. We want to have the draft out. However, after the public hearing and after the written record close, this body has the right to modify, alter, or put additional materials into the plan, provided it's issues that, you know, have previously been identified and followed through. There should always be time to make sure all those issues are addressed, and we have two sessions. If that first session after the public hearing on the 17th just needs to be a workshop to go through issues that were raised and address additional issues you've discovered in reviewing the plan, perfectly appropriate to do that and make changes. You're just making changes into a final document you would likely adopt, and that's done all the time. You know, you heard something at the public hearing, you read it on page 22, I want to change this in response to it. If there are new issues that come back up, might be useful to send a note on what those issues are prior, so folks can consider them before the public hearing. And again, the 17th is the day of the public hearing, the 17th of October. We're extending the written record solely so somebody could hear something at the hearing and respond to another speaker.
Councilmember Lilikus.
I have the two issues, and they're not totally brand-new issues. They're things I've mentioned before, but they really haven't been discussed or I think should be re-discussed. I think it'd be nicer if we could have a brief time on the 10th to discuss them before the hearing. We don't have to finalize whatever might come out of that meeting until after the hearing, but it might be nice for me to have a chance to mention them before the hearing.
I...
Counsel's pleasure.
I don't see anything wrong with that. I mean, it seems... Councilmember...
Since we're limited in time, I would agree, we can send in our comments that we might have had today for the comment tracker. That'll give staff plenty of time. We can keep it short and sweet, and if they have suggested language, we can approve it or not approve it and move on, if that's okay with council.
Okay. This segment is to include a session of public comment, so I want to know if we have anyone here signed up for public comment, because we want to go through that, so some of us can get some food in our bodies before we're back here in an hour. Is there anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, going once, twice. Linda, you have your hand up. If you have public comment, please come down here. I can't take your comment from up there.
It's just a comp plan. Only on comp plan.
Okay, so that closes our public hearing. We have two meetings, I'm sorry, two. I'm going to ask if we can defer all our new business to this evening from council. Do I have head nods on that? And we also need to approve the minutes really quickly. We have two sets of minutes. One of them is for September 19th for our special committee meetings, and the other one for September 12th for our committee meetings.
Move or move. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0, and we are adjourned until 7:00 PM. I did mention those. I said September 12th and September 19th.
That's evening. Okay, gotcha.